All right, we'll open the meeting at six oh nine P M. Do we have a quorum?
You do, Michael's on screen.
Okay.
Just make sure you go to him for the votes.
Yes, okay. Um, review and approve minutes from September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, any comments or can I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? All right.
All right.
And on to financial statements.
Okay, couple of things, uh, let's get the warrants on records first and then I'll talk about before I'm gonna talk a little bit about twenty-five as well as we're starting to work ahead to budget season, so sixteen warrants were signed totaling ninety-five thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and six cents, those were signed electronically since the last meeting. Uh, I did send you out the expense reports, I wanted to just touch on a couple of lines to give you some updates on a few things. Overall, there's no concerns about not meeting the budget, but we definitely have some overages that are true overages at this point that will have to move funds from another line, so again, not concerned about it, but just wanna give you a little bits of explanation, so there's some things in the business office, um, some of our accounting staff, the wages are a little bit higher than we budgeted, uh, our software fees increased because we upgraded the system last year. Um, what did I make a note about here? Um, the teacher lines, uh, cumulatively are over by like twenty-five hundred dollars, that is actual overage there. Uh, O T, same thing, I think the occupational therapy line will work itself out because we have somebody on an L O A, so currently there's the sub salaries in there and the teacher salaries, I think that that'll work out fine in the Washington end. Um, summer school stipends, that's on page three of the report, we did go over for summer staffing this year, so that's a five thousand dollar overage, so if you look at all the little lines, they probably add up to about ten thousand dollars. Again, not worried about it, the unfortunate part is that it means at the end of the year when we do all of that, you know, free cash spending, they'll be less available, um, but things between now and then could change, uh, the other thing to note is the buildings' general repairs line is over on this report, we're working on fixing that, we are using, um, E S R funds to help offset this year's budget, if you remember from last year, we had about twenty thousand dollars, the town asked us to reduce the budget to get us below the three percent. Originally, we had planned to pay a salary from E S R, but in order to save the nine percent teacher retirement fee, we're gonna pay buildings maintenance fees off of that, so, um, that line, I just have to have them changed, they're not used to going to a grant to pay buildings general repairs, so P O's were put in the wrong line, so I'm gonna fix that up, um, so that's not a problem. The other thing I wanted to bring your attention for twenty-four is that transportation for special education is up, it's up district-wide. Uh, in this case for Conway, I, in talking with the special education director, we should see back dollar-for-dollar reimbursement, because the student, uh, that we're adding a route for, modifying a route for, is a school choice student, so in that case, we can submit for a hundred percent reimbursement for transportation. Um, so if you look on the choice report, the transportation line, I did increase, um, pretty significantly right now, based on what we think the route is going to be at about sixty thousand, so that may change between now and the end of the year, but again, if that ends up being the true number, we'll see that money back through school choice. So not a major concern, just making you aware, cuz it is a big increase there.
Did funding adult for transportation overall, we still, wasn't that something that?
So the elementary school doesn't get reimbursement from the state, just the regional school, and it is funded, supposed to be this year at ninety percent, which is higher than it's been.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions about those reports before I talk about twenty-five? Michael?
Twenty-five?
I know, wow. So we're looking ahead already, um, to, to try to start some planning preliminarily, first thing that we always look at is what is our contractual obligation, so any teacher changes, um, that are coming up with the COLA increase, the STEP, uh, if anyone has column movement, meaning they've advanced their degree, if they're currently at masters and they've obtained additional credits and they're gonna move columns, uh, so Conway's not seeing any, uh, column movement next year, which is positive, because that has a big shift in the percentage, so COLA plus a STEP is usually a little over five, and if someone's moving columns, it could be anywhere from seven to eight percent, so it's positive that we're not gonna see that. Uh, the hard part for Conway next year is going to be that we have five requests for longevity payments based on the contract commitment, so when a teacher has worked at least fifteen years, they can put in for longevity payments, and those payments are four thousand for three years. At five teachers, that's twenty thousand dollars, which is one percent of our budget, so it's a significant increase, uh, for a really small district. Um, we, there is a clause in the contract that said, says that if there are budget problems, we can request, um, that teachers waive their right and move it to another year, so instead of taking their first year of longevity this year, they can take their longevity next year and the following two years after. I don't actually see that as solving the problem, it's really just pushing it down the road, so I don't believe we're gonna go there, uh, we may have to be creative in how we fund that. Uh, the other thing to think about with that many folks at over fifteen years, and actually, some of these people are surpassed the fifteen-year market, they just, you know, didn't put in for it yet, that means that we probably have some retirements coming up in the next three to five years or so. Hopefully not three, it won't, right? Uh, we do not have any retirements to pay out next year, that's a positive thing, this year we had one, um, a couple of years back, we had many, so we could be seeing that coming up in the next few years. For longevity, we'll throw that in the budget as a first look to see what it does to the numbers on top of the COLA and the STEP increases and all of the other inflation that we account for, uh, but we may have to look at using rural aid, uh, the, Conway does have some E S R funds available that we can use through September of next year, so we might have to get creative on how we cover it for year one and then look at it in the future.
May wanna put it in the budget as well, cuz you're gonna do three years worth, and then you know you're gonna get a retirement.
Yeah.
From one of those four.
Yeah.
At least, you usually put it in your last, you know, your last four years, cuz it goes toward your total, your total amount toward retirement.
Yeah.
So, just about everybody does their last three years unless, like, circumstances changing and they, whatever, so there's a possibility that all four are going out at once.
Five.
Five, brother, thank you.
I do think that's a good idea, I think that's what we tried to do last year was add in that retirement line because of our five schools, this is one of the few that doesn't have that in the budget, um, it's a smaller teacher pool, so it's not used regularly, so there's pros and cons to it.
You know, we can do it later on.
We can, yeah, um, I think our challenge is going to be that, from what we are hearing, the town is in a difficult spot financially.
It is, if we don't get any assistance, I felt like dual action today that I should talk about, funding for Conway while I was there, talking about funding for mental health. I think they see us as we don't need it, but people were.
They, yeah, they, um.
The roads themselves were like thirty million dollars.
Deerfield's going, has a special town meeting on next Monday, they're trying to get a five million dollar bond to pay for theirs, so they don't think they're getting the money, so I don't think Deerfield, I don't think Conway's.
Where they're gonna give it all to that town in East, that, that way, that would work.
Or call them.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, like, it, that's not good, it's not, it's not just trying to take loans out to pay the mortgage, but you're right, we may have to move though, we might have to come in very close to level.
Right, I think we're gonna have to do our best this year, I know that's.
Or we have, they've used E S R, and we'll talk about it, we'll get the numbers in front of us, but we do have some, some E S R, and we have some rural aid.
Rural aid numbers came out today, by the way, we've been saying that they, they haven't come out, yeah, so Conway's receiving twenty-six thousand in rural aid, um, which is a little bit less than what they estimated.
You thought it was gonna be thirty-two, I think, or thirty, forget it, whatever number is, it's down about.
Couple thousand.
Couple thousand each school.
But it's more than last, this current year, we're only receiving fourteen thousand, so we're headed in the right direction, um, so that's a positive thing, and it will help take care of, you know, some of these.
Really pick and choosing what pot we're paying what, but let's see what all the pots are during budget season.
All right, so there's a lot more to talk about, I just wanted to put it on the radar cuz it is a pretty significant circumstance where it does have a big impact on the budget, so.
Definitely. Seems to make sense to have it in the budget and not, and then do stuff later that we have, but it's mostly anticipating that they're gonna all be on the same timeline.
Right, I mean, we have the one grace here with E S R though this year, so we can help the town by using E S R on the budget if that's what, you know, if that's what it sounds like, but I think it's patient this time, right now, we're trying to, our game plan here is to give you information along the way, so it doesn't just become a January meeting, you're like, and there's a what, and there's a what, and just go like, okay, you can start seeing the different puzzle pieces before we put it together.
Definitely. Any questions for Shelley?
No, thanks, Shelley.
Mm-hmm. Uh, and Kristen, Santos, a principal's report?
Mm-hmm. Hey, Monty? I would like to give you the data update, um, so just, um, so you know, um, with our N W E A, um, we have fifty-nine percent math on or above grade level, um, we were hoping that number was higher, so we really are gonna jump in and, um, you know, look at exactly what's going on. The third grade, it's their first, so you always look at the story, it's their first ever test on a, on a computer.
Hmm.
And so, um, we certainly will take that into account as well as other things, um, but we.
That's so young, isn't it? I mean, I know it isn't, but it seems so young compared to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, eighty-two percent scored at or above level in the L A, which was great, um, and now we're gonna be looking at, we have a instructional leadership team grade level meetings that we're gonna be looking at, um, our formal informal assessment since a specific subgroup, so we look at attendance, we look at students who are requiring behavioral support, students who see the school psychologist, students who are, um, often seeing the school nurse, uh, students on individualized education plans or five oh four plans, students and family income, to see where we might see some subgroups falling, or in the past many years, we've had, um, where our subgroups of students on I E Ps for five oh four and low-income, uh, categories were actually performing at the same level as, um, we, I hate using the word typical, but what a child without any of those, um, challenges have, so that, that's been great, I think we've seen a dip, um, we're seeing a dip this year, so we're gonna really look closely at that, we did pick up quite a few new students who, you know, even in fourths and sixth grade, they might not have ever done any, well, so there, there's a lot, but we certainly put a lot of thinking into it, and we're doing a lot of benchmarking, which is great, so we have a math benchmark, an E L A benchmark, so that we can see along the way, um, new curriculum, the teachers have just been doing a great, great job taking on new curriculum, E L A, um, you know, reading, writing, and, and some dipping, um, deeply into the math, so, uh, I think we might see a little lull here, and then I think we're gonna, what we're seeing is really good stuff, but I think it's gonna take, um, you know, two years to really, even though we're still doing well, still proud of everything that everyone's doing. Their visit with Jennifer Lee, I don't know if anyone saw that in the Greenfield recorder, that was fabulous, working on our next visitors, visitor, we're gonna continue with Monty's March this year, Monty will be coming at the end of October to speak, the students really, really love, um, Monty's March. I want to just update you on a new special education, um, uh, I have such a, I'm not lost for words today, new addition to the educational, the I E P meeting and protocol, which is, which I love, we're trying to work this all out, but hearing more of the student voice, so inviting elementary students to meetings, or our spec, so we had one case, where an elementary school student came to a meeting, it was wonderful, so what's working for you, Elaine, what's not working for you, what could be more helpful? The student wasn't shy, they felt comfortable, there was another student who was a little more shy, didn't wanna attend, but our specialized teacher did an interview with the student and brought that information to the meeting, I think this is really very exciting, um, and so we're all trying to figure that out, because that's very different, usually in an I E P meeting, you certainly start with the strengths, but you're looking at areas of weakness, you're looking at areas of discrepancy, um, and, you know, we always start with the positives, but when you evaluate a child, that's what you're looking for, you're looking for gaps, you're looking for where their scoring was, so we, we have to be very careful if the child stays for the whole I E P meeting versus just the beginning, that we're, we always start in a positive way, but you know what I mean, like, we're really looking at deficits, and so rather than coming from a deficit model, we have to figure out how, how we're gonna do that, but it's, it's pretty exciting.
That's cool.
I think, I think this is great, Kristen, cuz I, I worked as a special education liaison for eight years, and, you know, at the middle and high school level, you have these transition meetings and you're interviewing students based on, like, what their interests are, career things that they won't wanna participate in, and honestly, like, sixth graders, fifth graders, they, they have all these same thoughts too, so being able to add student voice into these individualized plans is awesome, I'm really excited.
Yeah, and this is, as I'm sure you know, Michael, this is being pushed out through, um, you know, D E S I and special education, so the, you know, our whole district is having onboarding, our specialized teachers went to a workshop and they conversed with other specialized teachers in the district, and they're all sort of wrapping their, you know, it's new, it's a change, but yeah, I agree with you, um, you know, the student who came to the meeting, he gave us really good information, it was, it was really great, you know, um, and then they have a lot more to say, if you give them a chance to say it, yeah, what's working for you, what's, you know, um, and then, um, we had fire prevention, we, we in, in a fire drill this week, so Chief Finker comes, he's, it's great, he comes with, he does this every year, he comes with the two bears, and he buys all this sort of paraphernalia that little kids love, you know, they're on the buses with their, I see you, I see you in the ice map out and things like that, but Chief Finker has a ball with the kids, and, you know, he goes over some various serious things, um, in terms of fire prevention, but he does it in a nice way, um.
Well, the house burnt to the ground this week in Conway, so.
Yeah.
Just over the weekend, Saturday, right?
Two hours is out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Setting off some fireworks at your house, right?
One of those lanterns, fire lanterns.
We've done two fire drills so far this year, and, um, this past one, the students were all out of the building in place within three minutes, so, great.
That's impressive.
Quiet and in place.
I can't get adults to do that.
I know, it's really great.
What, we're supposed to leave the building?
Sure, I was at a hotel this weekend, Saturday night, midnight, fire alarm, I'm like, oh, I'm not moving, it keeps going, going, I was outside for about an hour, it was awful.
That happened with, when we got to Paris in May, we had like, you know, traveled, not slept overnight, arrived, got in, and like, we gotta like, lay down for an hour, right? As soon as we get flat, the fire alarm goes off, we don't even know, like, where are we, what are we doing? Oh, my God.
So instead of your light is flashing, you have to evacuate if your light is flashing, sent to me, I said, there's no light flashing in the room, I opened the door and there's light flashing all through the hallway, of course it was happening, it was asleep, not happening.
Right, yeah. It happened to us once at one of those water parks.
Oh.
From water parks all day, uh, and it was in like, February vacation or something, so we're on the way out of the room, and I'm like, get the car keys, you know? Thank God, we were kicked out for two hours, people are standing in like, their PJs and slippers and freezing cold, it was a gas leak, but we were warm in our big vehicle. I'm always exiting with the keys now.
I also want to just give a huge kudos to our specialized teachers for, um, helping to roll this out, I mean, they're just fantastic, and maybe, you know, eh, eh, this is all them making this work and, and happening, and I'm thrilled, yeah, it's awesome.
It's great. Um, and I'm excited to hear Monty's coming one more time, um, I'm, I don't know if you've, if you've heard his, uh, podcast, The Fabulous Four One Three on N E P R, N E P M, but, um, he's, uh, he's just doing amazing work, and, uh, so the fact that Color Grammar School gets to be a part of that is, is awesome.
Yeah, we're so excited, yeah.
That's great. Awesome. Any other questions for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen, thanks for the great work. Um, alrighty, public comments? No public comment? Okay. Um, unfinished business, all of an equity audit presentation of nine twenty-eight.
Um, so that was on there because officially, we, um, well, you guys got a quorum after we started, officially, we never opened any meeting to business on that evening, and we just had a presentation, and so technically, there's no minutes to that meeting, and so when I break, I wrote to chairs, it's just to let them know that technically, the meeting didn't exist.
I wondered about that, because usually we open for Union Thirty-Eight.
We didn't have a quorum, we didn't have a quorum on majority of the school committees for Thirty-Eight, so there was multiple rules.
Yeah.
Quorum rules that weren't, weren't available, and obviously, the president was from out of town, so we couldn't say, hey, come back another night, we had forty-eight hours to post, um, so we did a, we listened to the presentation, it was recorded, and by putting this here gets in the minutes that, um, the school committee attended a presentation of such, so.
I loved the data, it was very interesting, and he certainly was very comprehensive and, but stuff he's rolling out and gave the system a lot of kudos for being on this, so, but that was all good. So, you guys should watch the video if you haven't. So, definitely.
I was there on the, on the Zoom, watching it when they were presenting, so.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah. Alrighty, new business, appoint official delegate for M A S C.
Is anybody going to the conference?
I bet that's gonna be me, I'm going.
You're going? Oh, is it?
Yeah, I have a motion to appoint. Thank you, a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right, nobody else is going, it's fun.
I wanna go, Elaine, it's, it's just like with the three little kids and, uh, to be gone that many days, I looked at the, I went through the, uh, PDF of the workshops happening Wednesday and Thursday, and there are so many that I would go to, it's, it's really a tremendous offering, but.
Yeah, last year, the keynote was really good too, about mental health and standardized testing in schools, was really good, so, usually the keynotes are worthwhile, so. Alrighty, I represent, although I don't know if I hardly ever go to those voting meetings, but I'll do my best if I need to vote on, it's all eastern part of the state, unfortunately. All right, first reading policies, D J, D J A, D J E.
Uh, basically, there is a policy subcommittee meeting happening on Thursday, going through the slew of changes from last year, this, these are changes that came out, some of we talked about last year, but they have to do procurement, but what I did, because it's basically the law, and you can see it straightforward, I just pushed it straight to school committee to vote, to move into the place rather than go to the subcommittee, and whatever, it is straightforward, um, again, some of them are just language talking, but the biggest thing is procurement is changing from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in the end, but, and that's significant for us.
Okay, so read them between now and next meeting, and we will vote them the next meeting.
Correct.
Excellent. Uh, F Y twenty-five capital projects. Haven't we picked everything yet? Is our stove up and running?
Yes.
Oh, good.
It is, the new one is here.
Oh, good.
We took the old one away.
With none of the quirks of the old one, huh? That's good.
And well, though we did, Pat, um, McCarthy, the food service director, said when the tech fired up the new one, it did the same flame thing out the front, so he had to actually make some adjustments on the, um, stove to get it up and running properly, but no other problems.
Good. He said, before you even take that off your truck, make sure it's the right hookup, do not bring it in here.
Yeah, I know.
And that was, to be so excited about something, and that happens, it's such a pain, it's just, just a pain, yeah. All right, so what do we got for capital projects?
Um, I'm just gonna share with you. All right, so. You know, when I. So basically, um, you have, the good news, you have no projects that are currently open, uh, you already, only school that's is, everything else has been completed with that, the stove getting replaced, um. I apologize, cuz you know what, I sent everybody else a PDF of this thing to go through, so you have it, so I'll send it to you afterwards, and, um, but we'll just, what we'll talk about, what we see up there, so these are the four things that, um, Kristen met with Bill Hildreth, and we created a list of, um, projects that are coming down the pike, um, again, this might be something where there may not be a lot of money this year, as we've already talked about, um, but, um, we'll kind of go through the upgrading the phone system, um, my current phone system is not on, um, it's not in the, it's not running off our server, that all the other schools are, well, all the other schools are served. So, Deerfield, and they, you can't add more lines, and you can't buy replacement phones without going on eBay, and so it's just one of those things where it's, it's about time to.
Well, it's a safety issue too.
So, right now, just to be clear, but right now, I don't believe it's a safety issue, but as phones start to fail and that kind of stuff, um, you know what I mean, if I thought it was, if I thought it was a big case of safety issue, we'd just go use choice money right now, fix that, I just wanna, when we say that, but overall, you wanna make sure that obviously, our system is working on. Um, classroom floors, Kristen, I'm gonna hit it, jump in a little bit, cuz since you talked about this on the.
Yeah, so classroom floors, the two remaining are pre-K and K, they're, they're next on the list, I think we'll, eager with classroom floors, um.
And I, I'm just saying, that's removal carpet and putting in.
I'm sorry, yes.
That's what I was asking.
I'm sorry. Well, those guys are sitting on them all the time too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the idea is removing the, the floor carpet and put them, they're gonna, I guess they're wearing rugs instead, so they can replace them every, every three, three or four years, and then that way they look more sanitary, um, and then, pre-new A C mini splits, okay, we, this, and this would complete the building.
That's cool.
All right, and again, that number there, the twenty-eight thousand, is, um, nine thousand per unit, right now, we got forty percent back.
Yeah.
That forty percent goes back to the town, so, um, this is, if we buy it here, did we get the forty percent back? Uh, so last time the town paid for it, and the town got the rebate, so we thought we would actually be done with this project, that was the original plan, but because of the way we talked about that before, the way the accounting works, the town got the rebate.
Yeah.
Um.
Which classroom is left, Kristen?
So there are music room, which all the kids spend time in, um, I'm sorry, shouldn't know this right off the top of my head, sixth is done, fifth is done, fourth is done, third is done.
It's on the front office, but for the reason, the. I'm the one.
The teachers meeting?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, the one over there.
That one over there. Yeah, yeah. And then, um. Time line there.
It's okay, I'm just curious, I mean, schools are closing the first week of school for heat, so, and you were.
Our chef uses them exactly how they should use them, they don't overuse them, they don't underuse them.
Yeah.
Very thankful, very thankful for the air.
Um, and then, down the stretch, will be to get a B M S system that can run them all.
Yeah.
So we kind of, you know, and having this conversation with other towns about how to do it, we got the comfort first, without having the ability to manage it all from one central spot, so the next thing would be to tie them in, um, if, you know, I mean, I guess about a thousand dollars a room to tie them in, but we also have to, the system to tie them into, right, to do all that, so that'll be something further down the line, but that would be, so that, I would, I wouldn't say that A C mini splits is done until you tie them into a B M S system, and then, the final thing is the video screening system, Kristen, you're gonna have to jump in a little bit on that.
Yeah, we don't have any outside cameras, so our, you know, our playground has been, um, vandalized, the preschool playground was vandalized pretty badly.
Seriously?
What'd you say?
This year?
Uh, the preschool playground, it was in the spring, um, the playground, you know, it's, it's so, it's off the road, and it's pretty dark around here, you know, um, so our hope is to get some outside, uh, cameras, after all that investment in that playground.
Yeah, it's, it's good now, but it's like, um, the preschool was terrible, someone tipped over like their little house, and part of it broke, and, yeah, um, the, the, um, basketball hoops are crooked, uh, I'm looking at Jared.
It wasn't Jared, he came from me, I can't do him.
The, um, front sidewalk and entry rate weight isn't green, but is very close to green, because we have, we have many little children, adults who stumble and fall out there, there's very.
Well, we did the repair, where we shaved it, but that's not gonna last for so long.
So that, yeah, looking into the final one here.
Yeah, well, it's, the question is, what can we, so, you know, we have our own reserve.
Right.
You know, but, um, the town will be putting money. You know, but um, the town will be putting money, I imagine, this year back into it.
Right.
So I think we just kind of, you know, again, this is the beginning of the conversation.
Right.
If we have to go to the town, we have to get on their capital committee, their capitalist.
Right.
Um, again, I think we're going to kind of have to be strategic about, you know, what we, we probably want to do some project. Just keep things moving forward. We've got to be probably conservative this year.
Yeah.
I also think we can look at other funding sources. Again, rural aid, we're going to have money this year and that hopefully coming back next year. I don't think they're planning to take that away.
Yeah.
And then seeing what we have for ESSER. So Conway has been the least reliant on ESSER for budget reasons, although we did use 20,000. Most of the other schools used much more.
Yeah.
So we do have some funds available, so we can talk about what makes more sense. I do in the AC because we'll get.
The rebates.
Rebate.
Yeah.
You know, does it make sense?
That's where they go away.
Pay that, yeah.
Right. Yeah. Correct, makes sense. Any questions about this? All makes sense? And the new curtain looks good out there?
It looks great. It's beautiful.
Excellent. Alrighty, um, Denise sent a collaborative reports from since the last meeting, I think. So if people have a chance to review that, um, and I think that's it. Or any other news? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Michael? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, everybody.